Jennifer, do you have that? The last ORS number that you had there? In that email you sent earlier.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
It was the last one.
Are you talking about the legal statements?
What's that?
Are you talking about the legal statements or what the actual ORS was?
Yeah, our last ORS there.
Okay, everything is up and running. I am still searching for our other interpreter. I will keep looking. You're welcome to start and I'll try and do things as we go.
Did we get Renee back?
I do not.
There?
Oh, I see Renee.
Got it? Okay. So we're good to go, Jennifer?
I believe so.
Okay. The Board of Directors of the Newburgh School District, 29J, will meet late. Thanks everybody for being way patient. November 9, 2021, for a regular business meeting, by assume conference call to discuss and take action on minutes and other business items. So first thing we have to do is Director Shannon has volunteered to do the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director Shannon. Appreciate that. On the review agenda, before I do, I'm going to add, under new business items, it will be.
Oh, you need to make a motion for that, Dave?
Yeah. I'm just looking at the number here. I'm going to make a motion to add 192.6602B to new business. So I'll make that motion now. Do I have a second?
What's, what is that motion?
It's the last thing we discussed in our executive session.
I don't think you can add an executive session item to an agenda.
What's that? No, I'm adding it now. I'm adding it.
You're adding the disposition of that item? Is that what you're adding?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. We've got four. All those opposed, raise your hand. We have three. Motion passes for three.
Do we need to ask who were the four?
The four were Directors Shannon, Brown, Powell, and DeHart. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I believe that was the disposition of the item. I believe there was another item that someone was going to add to the agenda.
Was that under new business number E?
It would be under new business.
Can you remind me on that one?
I believe it was to discuss the superintendent position.
Isn't that what we just added?
No, what we added was the disposition of a complaint.
Okay, discussion on superintendent.
Complaints, isn't the complaint already on the agenda?
No, that was, that was a different complaint that we never got to.
So, Dave, you wanted, okay, go ahead.
Yeah. So, make the motion that we add that to new business for tonight.
Make, add what, Dave?
What's that?
Add what?
That we add, what we talked about, looking at the number 1.9 or 192.6602B.
We already passed that.
That is for what we just talked about, though. So which one were you talking about?
That we're discussing the superintendent's position. That's a separate.
A separate motion. It's a separate item.
Okay. I'll make the motion under new business, then that we are discussing the superintendent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of that motion to be put on there, raise your hand. Directors Brown, Shannon, DeHart, and looking down, Powell, those opposed, raise your hand. Directors Pyros, Director Penner, and Director, there we go. Okay, those are added. We'll go back to review agenda. Tonight, we're going through something we haven't done for a long time. O S of Office for our student representatives to the board. Then public comment. Then we'll have board superintendent comments. It'll be board first, student representatives next, and then superintendent. Next up will be consent agenda. I'll read through that. Then we have reports and presentations, monthly financial from Nikki Fowler, academic calendar from Greg Coscola. Under old business, statement of board decision on complaint 091621. Under old business B, superintendent standing committee for policy GBG. Under new business, two we just discussed, statement of board decision, policy GBG complaint, OSBA elections for Rebecca, budget committee discussions from Nikki Fowler, budget process calendar Nikki Fowler, and then supplemental attorney services discussion. Those are all in our new business. Under work session, we'll have public and board comment procedures and also complaint process against board members and future agenda items. So we're back to the O S of Office. Yeah. So, on October 26, 2021, the Newburgh School Board approved two students to serve on the Board of Directors for the 2021-22 school year. Madison Clink and Rowan Myers. These students will take their oath of office now. Congratulations, you two. So I'm going to say aye and then say your name, and if you guys are ready. If we were in person, we'd probably be standing up and doing all kind of stuff. Since we're on Zoom, I think we're, we're good to go here, so. So are you two ready to do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And congratulations, you guys. I, go ahead and say your name.
I, Rowan Myers.
Pledge that I will support.
Pledge that I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
During my term.
During my term.
I will honestly discharge.
I will honestly discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the student representative to the Newburgh School District.
Of the student representative to the Newburgh School District.
Board of Directors.
Board of Directors.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Rowan, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Copy everything he says. Nice job. Good job. Hey, Maddie, you ready to do all that, too? Okay. I, state your name.
I, Madison Clink.
Can you turn your volume up at all, Maddie? It's okay.
It's all the way up.
Oh, you're good. You're good. Pledge that I will support.
Pledge that I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
During my term.
During my term.
I will honestly discharge.
I will honestly discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of student representative to the Newburgh School District Board. Let me back up on that one. I know that's a lot. The office of student representative.
The office of student representative.
To the Newburgh School District Board.
The Newburgh School District Board.
Of directors.
Of directors.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Awesome. Good job, Maddie. Thank you very much. You guys are the first ones since I've been on the board where we've had that. So anybody that was involved in making this happen, thank you very much. You guys are going to be a big asset, so we really appreciate you wanting to do this. In a few minutes, we'll have comments from the board, and then you guys will go after us and then before the superintendent. Does that make sense? So you have a few minutes to get ready for that. You can say whatever you want to say about schools or whatever, okay? All right. Again, congratulations, you guys. We are going to public comment. Jen, how are you doing on that? Think we're okay?
I am looking.
Do you need a little more time, Jen?
Yeah, I'm going to need a minute.
Okay, do you want us just to go ahead and go into comments right now? Maybe come back to that? Would that help you out?
Nope, I think I can do it. I just, I'm searching through a list and hopefully I'll find her shortly. One moment, please.
Everybody else, Jennifer, had a long day. Working really hard for all of us, so, for the nights over, tell her to thank you if you can.
I'm promoting Jerry Turgerson to the board, you know? You could turn on your video, Jerry.
Hi, I'm Jerry Turgerson, a parent of the district and a community member, and I work locally here as a psychologist within our community. The last time I spoke to the board, the mental health of our district's youth had been not a priority and been significantly neglected. I would be remiss if I didn't highlight the significant support that Joe has demonstrated for student mental health throughout our community in the time that I have been supporting the school district. I have volunteered and partnered with the Newburgh School District over the past five years. And unfortunately, it was a relationship that was initially tragically started after multiple youth died by suicide within our community. I've been inspired by the passion of people working within this district. And those who I've interacted with have demonstrated true passion and commitment to authentically seeing, knowing, and honoring the youth that they're serving. We are really in a pivotal space as a community as we consider how we want to support youth mental health. We are a community that has been directly touched by adolescent suicide, inherently increasing our youth's overall risk. In Oregon, suicide is the second leading cause of death for all youth under the age of 25, and that number only increases for LGBTQ and trans plus youth. Nationally and here at home, data demonstrates that we are on a trajectory of rapidly increasing rates of depression, anxiety, and mood disorders. Rates that have only been amplified and exacerbated by the pandemic. A pandemic resulting in a 50% increase in emergency department visits for youth experiencing mental health crises and suicidal ideation. We know that marginalized youth have higher rates of mental health considerations, higher rates of adverse childhood experiences, which includes community experiences of trauma, abuse, discrimination, and racism. The actions at the school board level are directly impacting the mental health, well-being, and sense of safety the youth are currently experiencing with our, within our community. If our children aren't to be able to learn, succeed, and excel, we must effectively tend to their mental health and honor their whole identities as individuals. It is imperative that they be surrounded by and supported within environments of affirmation. Representation matters. Our actions matter. Having visible symbols that you, as an individual, in your personal identity are held, honored, and celebrated helps to further that environment of safety. It fosters and supports conversations and dialogues that can give space for all youth to be authentically present within their school environment. These symbols are essential and support cultures of safety. These symbols of affirmation must also be backed by strong, unequivocal language of safety and compassion, and language that resoundingly rejects racism, discrimination, and clearly articulates the needs to address the structural and systemic racism and biases that continue to impact our education and community. As you consider the gravity of the changes you are making, please consider the youth involved, the immediacy of their well-being, their sense of belonging, and the direct impact that you are all having on our mental health, as well as the positive impact and importance that overt statements of compassion, belonging, and representation have for students' emotional, physical, and academic well-being. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Jerry.
Promoting Rebecca or Becky Ankeny. Please turn on your video.
Thank you for a chance to address the group. When students in our schools see the ban of Black Lives Matter and LGBTQ pride flags from classrooms, they don't see the principle of keeping politics out of the classroom. Students in these groups face taunting, slurs, and bullying every day. On the one day this school year, I picked up my granddaughter from Newburgh High School. I heard someone yell a homophobic slur in the parking lot. Students of color or queer students see support being pulled away. They feel more alone. This is an unintended consequence of the recent ban. I'm sure none of you became directors on our school board to make it easier for bullies and worse for their targets. Please consider how you can identify with and speak up for the targets. If you yourself feel you have been bullied, use the memory of how horrible and lonely that feels to build empathy with those of our students who are bullied and taunted every day. How can the Newburgh School District express support for students who face abusive language and outright bullying because of their color or gender identification? What is your plan for making students of color and queer students feel safe and have a sense of belonging in our schools? If teachers cannot use these symbols, which are shorthand for supportiveness, what can the school board and the teachers do and say to make clear that all students belong, that all are cared for, and that abuse and hateful speech will not be tolerated without violating the general ban you have approved? One positive step our community could take to make clear that we do in fact value all human beings, that we recognize we are responsible to work to increase the good in our world for our whole human family, could be to incorporate a curriculum into middle and high school health classes to teach students how to intervene without violence in situations where someone is doing harm to a targeted person. This program is called Training Active Bystanders, and training is available on their website. Has a long history of being used in public education and in colleges to help students step in and protect without increasing the temperature and causing violence to take place. I think we'd all like to see our students come home from school excited and talking about the great day they had, all of our students, every day. Thank you. My name is Becky Ankeny. I'm an NHS graduate. I'm married to an NHS graduate. I have two daughters who graduated from the Newburgh Public Schools, and I have four grandchildren in the Newburgh Public Schools.
Thank you, Becky. Becky, thank you very much.
I am unable to find the next person, and I had one commenter mention they will not be here, so I'm moving on to Solely Willow. Okay. Solely, I see you're on the panel. Is your video?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. My name is Solely Willow. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a student at Catalyst High School. I live in Newburgh, and I'm going to be addressing the flag ban today. I am a transgender student. I was born male, and now I identify as female. My transition has been short-lived for now. It only happened in April of this year, 2021. And this school year has been the first time I've experienced school as a transgender student. I just, I've been affected by these bans. I think there's many things that are political in our world, and pride and pride symbols are not one of them. It shows me that I am accepted as who I am. I am accepted, and I am safe, and I am protected as all students should be in this school. I want to encourage the board to listen to the students, and mainly the students, because that is the board's job, is to serve the community and make sure that the students are in a place where they can learn, where they can be educated, and where they can feel safe and respected. I feel that this flag ban has not created a safe, respected environment in the school district. I believe it has created a dangerous and volatile situation. I believe that people are, I believe that people are, excuse me, give me just a second. People are upset, to put it plainly. I am upset. And it's only furthering mental health crisis. I beg the school board to reverse this ban because it creates a safe place for the students. It creates a safe place for me. It creates the sense of belonging that I don't have right now. It creates a space where I can go to school and not feel like my existence is up for debate. I feel that my existence is up for debate right now. I feel that is, that is what the board is discussing, whether I should be able to express myself or not. And it is excruciating to feel that. And I don't know if you can empathize, but I beg you to empathize as much as you can. See how this is affecting students. I'm Solely Willow. Thank you.
Solely, thank you very much.
Promoting Carrie Martel.
Hi, my name is Carrie Martel. I was born and raised in Newburgh. I'm the editor of The Annual Advocate, a digital newspaper, where I've been publishing many stories detailing the conspiracy formed against the residents of our town by a group called Newburgh Equity and Education, whose stated goal is to indoctrinate the children of the Newburgh School District into critical race theory with the objective of changing the voting culture of our town. First two commenters on this are members of that group. That all sounds crazy, and yet it is true, as shown through hundreds of screenshotted conversations in private Facebook groups, groups that members of the school board, Brandy Penner and Rebecca Pyros, participated in themselves and have done so for over a year in violation of public meeting laws. All of the evidence for these claims is available in the articles I have published on, yandila advocate dot com.
Carrie, I'd like to.
Saturday.
I hope you, please refrain from using any individual school board members' names. Thank you.
Gotcha. Just this past Saturday, members of this group, including some school faculty, participated in a fundraiser for recall Brian Shannon, where a current high school student performed as a drag queen at Chehalis Valley Dance Academy, which is owned by Kristen Stoller, who also is operating the so-called Wellness Center in the high school that advocates both critical race theory and the discredited fringe gender theories of John Money. And as Kristen Stoller herself said, "The goal of this is to change the voting culture of Newburgh, Oregon." I am demanding the resignation of the school board directors who were involved in all of this for their participation in the activities of Newburgh Equity and Education, which has included literally trying to break up the marriage of one of the other school board members who is currently being recalled, or they're trying to recall him, because they think it will pressure him into resigning. If they do not resign, I'm calling on the other members of the school board to censor them and remove them from all committees, and for the voters of Newburgh to recall them from office and file complaints with the Oregon Government Ethics Commission for the numerous violations of public meeting laws they intentionally committed as part of this conspiracy. Everything they say in these meetings is based in lies designed to obstruct the school in cooperation with the teachers' union, which is also part of their group. I also believe the superintendent should probably be terminated. This has all happened during his term as superintendent. He has done nothing to stop it. He's either complicit or he's incompetent to resolve the problem. We clearly need a new administration in the school district if we are put an end to this insanity. We need to restore sanity to our school district. Thank you.
Jen, you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you. I am looking for a mark. We have a few on, and I did not receive a last name. So I'm going to attempt to pull up and see if this one is who asked to be speaking tonight. Mark, can you please turn on your video? Hello?
Yeah, I'm here.
Are you the one who requested to speak?
What's that? Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yeah, I just can't seem to get my, I don't do this a lot. So, do I need to turn on? I don't know how to turn the camera on.
Okay, I can't. Yeah, then we can hear you, so if you'd like.
All right. Anyway, my name's Mark Colby. I'm a longtime resident of Newburgh Dundee, graduated Newburgh High, taxpayer-concerned citizen. I have a comment regarding the enforcement of the new policy GBG staff participation in political activities. It is specific and very detailed in what is not to be displayed, that being anything that depicts support or opposition to a political, quasi-political, or controversial topic. I believe that we can all agree that the symbols, flags, depictions revolving around BLM pride flags, let alone if it was a Blue Lives Matter or MAGA symbol, are all considered by most to be potentially very controversial in Newburgh. Whether they are political in nature is up to some debate. This policy, when voted on and approved by the board, it became the law of the land, even though there could be challenges to it. At that time, the superintendent and other administrators who serve at the pleasure of the board, they are bound to enforce this policy, no matter how they may feel about it. That is not an option. They are not to be a roadblock. Even though there may be challenges to a display, it should be immediately removed till resolved. That is the policy, not to be drawn out and children subjected to whatever the controversial display may be inflicting on them. I would say that any school employee, counselor, teacher, administrator, witness anything of this nature that it would, that it should be addressed immediately, no matter what side of the fence they may be on. My question is, there is, have there been removals of any of the displays to date? My opinion is no. They are seen on Facebook, other social media sites, photos, comments, and such. The superintendent and school employees all know this to be true. They are in defiance of the policy and not willing to do anything about it. They are in defiance of the policy and not willing to do anything about it. The tax being public has difficult access to the schools and classrooms, especially with COVID, to witness what is actually going on. But with Zoom classes during COVID, the eyes of the parents and the community were open to see what was actually happening. And more likely now, more indoctrination is being incurred, occurred than ever before due to this opposition. Though different, due to union involvement, something should be done to encourage them to follow the policy requirements. But the superintendent and school administration are employees and should be relieved of their duties for not following directions of the board. I strongly encourage that the board make this clear in a written directive if needed, and if not followed, then that person or persons should be removed. My other point is, I would like an answer now on why the discussions and decision vote on complaint 93021 is/was not held in open session so the public can know each board member's position on this issue and others that may came up in the future. Another, I think the board needs to, as soon as possible, need to get into and investigate the curriculums being taught in the schools and the indoctrination that's taking place.
Our time's up at three minutes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, that is all I have for tonight that have signed up that are, that I can find present.
Again, Jen, great job on that. I know it was a lot of work, so thank you. We are on to our student representative comments. So we're moving through this and are you two ladies ready to go? Maddie, would you like to go first on your student comments?
Um, yeah, I can go first.
Whatever you want to say.
Anything?
Whatever. It's your time to comment.
Okay. Well, first, I just wanted to thank everyone for giving both Rowan and I this opportunity. I'm really excited. And I'm not super sure like about everything that we're gonna do, but I'm really excited to figure it all out. And I'm just really thankful to be able to do this. I think it's really great. And as far as like talking about things in, as far as like problems in the school, right now, I'd say that the biggest problem I think in the school is, it just feels really like, which you probably, it feels really like, like it feels like there's sides, which I've never really felt before, like going to school, it's never really felt like there's sides. I mean, there's always like certain kids and there's different groups, you know, like that not everyone hangs out with. But right now, it feels like super divided, like there's two separate sides. And kids on one side don't want to talk to the kids on the other side. And I think that's the biggest problem that's happening right now. Cause it's caused a lot of division and like problems as far as bullying and stuff like that. So I'd say that's the biggest problem that we have at school right now is it's really divided. Like there's very clear sides, which is a problem.
Good job, Maddie. Very good. Thank you very much. Rowan, are you ready?
Um, yes. My only comment is to thank the board again for giving Maddie and I this offer, this amazing opportunity. And I look forward to working with the directors and you, Chair Brown. And also, I'm very excited to better represent our student body for these meetings. Thank you.
Rowan, you're gonna have a future as a speaker. I can tell. Well, it's great to have you guys part of this. I kind of went out of order there. It was supposed to be kind of the board comments and then you guys, but you guys stepped in really good right there. So most of us on the board haven't had student representatives until now. So we're gonna be learning right alongside you guys. And so don't be afraid to ask questions. And we will try to get people to reach out to you guys to let you know if we can help you in any way. Okay? So thank you so much. Kind of want you to go back to board comments there. Kind of get that one out of order. So I'm just gonna go around and I'm gonna start with Brian Shannon. Do you have any comments?
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay. Director Inez, you have any comments?
Yeah, Maddie and Rowan, welcome to the board. I really hope that you learn a lot from this experience and that this experience is better for you than it has been for me. But know that I'm here to support both of you in whatever way I can. So feel free to ask questions and reach out. I do want to thank everybody in this district, students for showing up school in these difficult times, staff and teachers for the hard work on the ground, administrators for running the show and making sure your buildings are running smoothly, bus drivers, cooks, everyone. And Joe, of course, you. Gracias por ver a nuestra comunidad y apoyarnos siempre. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Trevor, coming to you.
Yeah, no, no, no comments tonight. Thanks, Chair Brown.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Brandy, go ahead.
Thanks, Dave. Yeah, welcome, Rowan and Maddie. We're really excited to have you here. I have been on the board when we've had student representatives and I've seen how much your perspective adds to this experience and leadership of our district. And I'm so thankful that you're here. You know, the next few months are gonna give you real-time education and local governance. Please know that you're not in this alone, always available. So please use me as a support and welcome. I'm glad you're here. I had planned on using my time tonight to celebrate what we're seeing as a slow return to normal. You know, we've got a high school musical performance happening. Volunteers are able to get into our schools again. Halloween celebrations happen, Day of the Dead celebrations. But instead, I find that I need to use my time to really plead for our children. I know by now that this will fall on deaf ears of four board members, but I want everyone else to really understand what's happening. Our children are being used and thrown out in the name of ambition, hatred, and extremism. In the last three months, we've gone from a moderate, thriving district to a punching bag for those who wish to make a buck and a name for themselves. The people making the majority decisions may claim that they care, but their definition is a horrendous twist of caring. You care so much that you're destroying the community. You care so much that you're suing teachers and parents. You care so much that you don't even have kids enrolled in our schools. And you care so much that you ignore the pleas of our community and our students. You care so much that you're driving our school district to financial ruin. These are my kids. This is my kids' education and future. This is not some theoretical exercise. This extremism has real consequences for our community and more importantly, for our kids. This is destroying us. This is an incredibly sad moment for our community and most importantly, for our children. Because at the end of the day, it's gonna be our kids that are paying the price. This is their education, their shot. All they want to do is learn. They don't want rhetoric or conspiracy theories or rantings of extremists that don't even live here. These are my kids. These are all of our kids and they deserve an education not based on authoritarian tactics, but on American democracy, the freedoms of thought and speech. Our kids don't deserve this. My kids don't deserve this. These kids need a shot at a better life and it's being taken away. I beg every, every person in our community to support the kids. Tell them they're important. Tell them they're beautiful and tell them that they matter. And thank you to every single person for doing everything you can to combat these incredibly dark days. Thank you.
Okay. Director Renee, you're up.
I also wanted to welcome Rowan and Maddie to the board. And yeah, it's great to have you on there and have some young faces. And, and with Becky Anthony that spoke, I, I'm really interested in that training active class. I'd like to do more research on that of hopefully helping kids go through how to handle bullying and certain tough situations and stuff like that. So that was, I didn't even know that they had something like that. So I'm interested in doing some more research on that. But yeah, yeah, so thank you.
Thanks, Renee. Director Rebecca, you're up.
Okay, this is, I went on several walks today thinking of what I was going to say tonight. And first of all, I want to thank Jennifer, our board secretary. She was kind of called out on the carpet the other day when, when an inflammatory comment came up. And if we could understand the, what she does to get the Zoom links together. And she's doing a marvelous job and I want to support her and thank her. And I believe in, 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 in process and following the guidelines and working together. And I plead with our board members to, to, I have tried to be as, as working, giving you a hand to support you, to, to find ways out of the mess we're in. And I just, I'm fearful of some of the actions that are taking place that are going to destroy our school district. And like Brandy said, these kids, I don't have any children in the school district now, but I was a secretary and I know what, what happens in the school district. I know how much hard work it is to get the kids to the right class. These are my kids too. And, and our, I lose sleep, not for my own safety, but I'm anxious about what my actions have done to, to students in our district. What has caused students to, to be, feel unsafe? And I, that's why I get anxious or, or lose sleep. And I just want to try to find a way through this. I also want to say how much I, I trust and appreciate our administrative team. And, and what they've done to bring to, to fill the gaps that have happened through this pandemic. This didn't get started just because we passed a ban on political signs. The education has been working and the educators have been doing a fantastic job working to get children back up to grade level. And, and I applaud their efforts. And this is a great school district. We have a lot of problems, but if we can work together, we can get through these problems. But, but by throwing the baby out with the bathwater, that's going to destroy what we, what we can do. And gonna cost the district financial and personnel and a detriment to the, to our community, to our Newburgh community. So I really plead that we learn to work together and, and join, join together to solve our problems.
Thanks, Director Rebecca. Yeah, I thought about what I was gonna say too. You know, I've heard about everybody feeling want for the kids. I've heard about all the, we're trying to do everything we can in our school district. And a year and a half ago, we were told we were gonna be divided as a country and as a, in a city. And we have been. We've been totally divided. And we've had people in our community, part of our, our unions going after these school board members because you don't like the way they vote. The truth is that Director Shannon, Director Brown, Director Powell, and Director Dehart think that every kid is super important. The lie out there has been that we don't care. We do care a great deal. There is no racist intent. There is no homophobic attempt. There is none of that going on at all. You come to my house on Thanksgiving, you will find people of color. You will find people that are gay. You can come anytime and ask that question. There is not, that's been a complete lie that's been put out there. And we have people that want to hide behind Facebook and they want to hide behind all the things that they do out in this community to harm our community. Our kids and our schools have been divided because that's what we were told was gonna happen to our country a year and a half ago. And Newburgh is just happens to be the tip of the spear. When we talked about getting the flag ban, this was simply about politics coming out of our schools that should have never been allowed in our schools in the first place, should have never been allowed, and it was allowed. We shouldn't have any other type of flag. We shouldn't have anything to do with MAGA or Joe Biden or anything else in there, but we did allow it. And it's caused division, nothing but division. Because you believe in it and others don't, that's division. And that's where the division is coming from, from our young people. And so don't sit back behind Facebook or don't sit back behind a holier-than-thou thinking that you've got it all going on for our kids. When in fact, we need to get back to just school, get back to, we've had all the policies in place before any of that happened. All the policies were there. The adults in this town have hurt our kids. The adults have hurt our kids. And make no mistake, I'm looking a lot of those people in the eye right now. And you have to go home and look in the mirror that when you brush your teeth and say, I'm part of the problem. Don't, don't point fingers anymore. Stop it. Our district has gotten to the point where we can't wait to throw somebody under the bus. We can't wait to do the next mean thing. And it's gotta stop. It's gotta end. And that's what our kids really need. They need adults to just get back to taking care of them. I've seen it in the past because I worked there also. For 20 years, I saw great administrators and great teachers put their best effort out. And it can happen again if we would just simply stop as adults. But will ya? Will we? We'll see. Because it's easy to talk. It's easy to, to, to throw people under the bus, but it's harder to do it. And there's differences of opinions in this community, big time. There's people that agree with the flag ban. There's people that don't agree with it. But it doesn't stop with agreeing, disagreeing. People have to be mean-spirited, attack, go after work, go after all kinds of issues. All that needs to stop so we can focus back. Superintendent comments are next.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Maddie and Rowan, welcome to, it's been a little while since we've had students on the board. So I hope that you learn a lot from this part of the public process. It's an interesting thing, as you will witness tonight and every other night that you're here. So please dig in and engage and, and learn to think about what public process and true lessons and civics are. So welcome. I'll keep my comments very short. I just do want to say frankly that the, the critical work of educating students cannot be done well without the love and support for each of our students and who they are, or a vision of what's truly possible, for the strong community partnerships. And then of course, finally, and without, and an undeniably, unbelievably incredible staff. Gracias por todo y gracias a cada uno de ustedes. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Dr. Joe. Next up is Consider Agenda. I'll ask for a motion here in a minute, proven in minutes from previous meetings. We have some donations to go over. Rendered LLC donated $348 to the Black Student Union. Rendered LLC donated $348 to the Catalyst GSA. So thank you to Rendered for that. The Newburgh Rotary Foundation donated $10,000 to the Newburgh School District. Uh the Newburgh Rotary Foundation uh donated ten thousand dollars to the Newburgh School District. Uh thank you to all the Rotarians for uh for that. No matter how big or small your gift is to the district, it's always greatly appreciated. So thank you very much. Um under personnel recommendations, uh we're accepting some uh licensed temporary contracts. Uh so welcome to Laura Gill, teacher at Mabel Rush, uh Barbara Mann, teacher at COA. And Gina Boyd, teacher at Mabel Rush Elementary. So welcome. A couple of these were tough ones for me. I accept license resignations. Um Leah Kelly, teacher at Mabel Rush Elementary. Shelley Grant, longtime teacher at Mabel Rush, fabulous teacher. Uh Shelley, uh thank you so much for everything you did. You were great. And also accept the retirement from Barbara Mann, a teacher at Mabel Rush Elementary. So a lot of changes at Mabel Rush. So the recommendation is move that's Newburgh School Board District Board uh Directors approved the consent agenda as presented.
Is that a motion?
That's the recommendation.
I move that the Newburgh School Board Directors accept the consent agenda as presented.
Got a second? All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
I'm vote seven zero. Thank you very much. Thanks, Rebecca. Okay, that's consent agenda. Next up is going to be the monthly financial reports. Uh first one will be by Nikki Fowler.
Great. In light of our um time right now, I know we're getting late. Um I'm sure my information is pretty self-explanatory at this point. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions for Nikki, you guys? Nikki's always got it laid out really well, so thank you Nikki for that. I'm sure if we we do so, no questions for Nikki before we move on.
I would just follow up with, there were some questions last month and I did not receive any emails um or any extra information as to what you wanted. So if anybody wants to come join me, just give me a call or email.
Great, thanks Nikki. Appreciate it. Okay, next up on this would be to present the academic calendar for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three from Greg Huskell.
Thank you Chair Brown and board members. Uh each year we work to approve the academic calendar and there's one sense where it's uh very boring, but it's also very important and very complicated when we need to make sure that we abide by our contracted hours. Make sure we meet state laws, make sure we hit all the holidays in the process. So our process tonight is not for any action. We're presenting this to you uh to gather feedback from you, from community and staff on these options before we then present it to you for approval at the December fourteenth meeting. And a lot of that is to um make sure there are a lot of eyes on this calendar to make sure that we have um met all the responsibilities for contract days for prep and for grading and for conferences and for all of the things, for professional development, all the things that are there with our staff. The calendar this year falls very similar to the one for next year. Uh and so the options, uh there really are only two options that are presented to you. Um each of them begins uh September sixth, except for um at the middle school level, only sixth graders begin that day. At the high school level, only freshmen begin that day. So um the rest of those will start the following day, Wednesday, September seventh. Both calendars are the same that way. The difference is in option A, draft A, uh there is not school the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which makes the last day of school Friday, June sixteenth and pushes the final prep day for teachers to the following Monday. The other option in draft B is to have school Wednesday, the twenty-third, which is of November, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which would allow the last day of school to be June fifteenth and allows that prep day to happen um on June sixteenth and not have to carry over the weekend. Uh as for the con- as per the contract, we've presented this to the associations for feedback. And uh the feedback is mixed between administrators and the associations at this point on the two drafts. There are arguments uh in favor of both. Um so this is in front of you as the board to give any comments that you have either here tonight or in writing back to us. And we would also like to say to the public, if you have uh opinions on the difference between the two drafts, if you can uh email me, um we will tally all those and present that to the board uh for the next one. It comes up on December fourteenth. Are there any questions at this point on the difference between the two drafts or on the process?
Greg, what will happen um if, because both unions are up for negotiation this this spring? Will that, could that affect the calendar?
The way that it could affect the calendar is if there are negotiations to change the number of school days or prep days uh from what they are now. Um we are trying to get this, one of the things we've tried to do is to get calendars ahead early so that families can plan. So we are presenting this at this time as the board has requested of us uh to get on that as soon as possible. So if we approve this and there is a change in the contracts, we will have to do an adjustment to the calendar as we've done uh in the past after those contracts are ratified.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, which one did the admin choose? Which one did teachers choose? Can we ask that question?
Um the the association leadership was in favor of draft A and um the administration was uh mostly in favor of draft B with some in favor of draft A.
Did they give any reasons why?
Um it primarily is around that that the the issue of the difference of, you know, is is the day before Thanksgiving a difficult day for uh people to learn? Are they going to be leaving anyway? Um or is it difficult on staff and others to have to push on to that next uh Monday? So those are kind of the the things to weigh between the two. You know, it doesn't seem there's a clear compelling reason in either direction for that. But we may have feedback from the public or from others that help us to see compelling reasons.
When's the uh, what what uh, I remember last year it was really tough one to put together. What's the, what's the the drop dead time when this all has to be approved?
Um the goal, before COVID times, the goal was to have uh have the calendar planned out a full year ahead. So we're not even at at that point yet. We're we're a little behind that. So at this point, the goal that feed from feedback that we heard from you as a board was wanting to get these calendars set as soon as possible so that families can make their plans and know what vacations they can depend on. Um so the only drop dead date of it is the amount of notice that we're giving to our families and to our staff to make plans for next year.
So what do you need from us moving forward on this?
Uh any feedback you have on options of those two plans so that I can collate that data along with any data from public or staff if they email to me. And I will present that to the board in the packet uh for the December fourteenth meeting so that then you can um have that information when you make your decision on which calendar you want to adopt on December fourteenth.
So would you just like us to email you that stuff or do you give us the time to look at it?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Yep, and the same goes for the public. You can uh email me any thoughts you have and for staff as well.
Does the board have any questions now that you'd like to ask, Greg? Greg, I know it's a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good to go. Got that one down? Well, we already had a break earlier, so is everybody willing to keep going right now? Or does anybody need a break? Board members?
We should keep going.
Okay. Um under old business, uh we've got a statement of a board decision on complaint zero nine one six two one. On September sixteen, two thousand twenty-one, complaint zero nine one six two one was submitted to the district through the complaint process outlined in policy KL slash J F H Public and Student Complaint Procedure and Associated Administrative Regulations. Uh because the complainant was dissatisfied with the findings and conclusions provided in steps one through three of the process, the complainant chose to appeal uh the decision to the board. On October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, the board held a hearing, an executive session, O R S one nine two point six six zero for these two, for these B, which allows the board to meet an executive session to consider the dismissal or displaying of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent who does not request an open hearing. This is executive session, is peruse and appeals of grievance and complaint decisions and appeals of denials requests for exceptions to policy construed as complaints against staff members. A statement of the board's decision to uphold or overturn the administrative decision was to be given during the open session on October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one. However, the board tabled the statement of decision in order to receive more information in a continued hearing during an executive session scheduled for earlier this evening. So recommendation, um been a long time ago, guys, since we were in that meeting, we re-end that one and we decided to
Mr. Chair, I I move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors overturn the administrative decision regarding complaint zero nine one six two one and direct it to investigate uh the potential involvement of students in the violation.
Did you just make a motion there, sir?
Yes.
Do we have a second? I have a second. Any discussion? Hey, all all those in favor to uh?
I'm sorry, excuse me, Dave. I just want to quickly make a a quick discussion point that this uh has been before the board now twice an executive session. I don't see that there is going to be any further information gain that would change my decision on it, uh and I will not be supporting this motion.
Okay. So, all those in favor of uh to overturn the decision, please raise your hand. Directors, uh Dehart, um Powell Brown and Shannon, those not in favor, raise your hand. Directors Pyros, Penya and Penner, motion passes for three. Okay. Moving on. Next one up, uh Superintendent Standing Committee for Policy G B G uh brought forth by Director Pyros. Uh Director Pyros, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, this is um a chance for us to um let get this, the educators in our district the respect that they they deserve to actually work through some of the issues that um like Maddie was was talking about, the division in the schools over this issue and that they work together and come to some agreements of what is controversial, what is acceptable. And that it's an eight-member team with with the the chair being either the superintendent, the assistant superintendent or possibly um the director of of teaching and learning that can um work together and that there's an equal number of people from each side. And two board members who are ex officio, they're only there to listen, not to vote and not to um to give comments, but just to listen, to observe how how the the committee is working together. And that they we task them with um to come up with what what would be acceptable um to avoid count um countless um disagreements or complaints that that could be remedied through this process. And I think that it's a way that we can, we can um take some of the the um energy that is being um worked over on this issue to a a showing that we can work together and come to consensus. And and um that is why I'm proposing this. And that they would, they they would um a a due date would be by the end of June so that we can discuss what they propose during our board retreat in the summer. And if they're finished ahead of time, they could come before the board with their their suggestions.
Okay.
Uh Mr. Chair, I have some questions uh for Director Pyros about this. Um how does she envision uh the people who are going to be on the committee being selected? What is the output uh that she expects to see? Because it sounds like she's talking about enforcing the policy. Uh but I don't, I guess I don't understand, is it drafting a recommended A R? Which usually falls under the superintendent?
Well, it I I think it's um because the the um policy is so broad about what what is po- political, what is quasi-political and especially what is controversial that that um P the the committee members should be um um volunteered, volunteer and then approved by the um the chair. And and um may also that each member um on the team also get together and say, yes, we can work together. So there's some consensus there and that they 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 could look at, okay, what's wrong with this sign? What's wrong with that sign? You know, and 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 see, well, this this symbol is is not couldn't couldn't controversial. It's not political. It's not quasi-political. This is okay, you know? And it it's a consensus, so every voice has has meaning and has weight. It's no majority. But everyone has to agree on the on the situation. And so that it 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 will um provide some some um direction to the admin, to the to the teachers, what what they can and can't do. Because in this void that that is so open-minded, you we're going to have lots of um complaints. And your people are going to be trying to to see what what is acceptable and what isn't. And and the educators, um I I respect them and I feel that their voice hasn't been been really listened to either side. And that they they also have listening sessions with the students and with the community members and the staff to see what 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 would be, what could be worked through this so this policy actually reflects what we want. And not a dividing rod, but something that can um and bring us together.
So I guess I would ask, um I, you know, I appreciate the idea of trying to get a balance of the two sides. I guess my concern would be that, you know, the people who have spoken in support of this policy have been you know, subjected to a great deal of vitriol and in some cases had their livelihoods targeted. Um so what makes you think that people would feel safe volunteering for that position? Because it doesn't really seem like we are currently in a climate where we can have those conversations where two sides can rationally come together and debate this issue and talk about it.
Well, if if we take it on ourselves to say this is going to be a safe situation and that we invite, we encourage people to speak out and that that during the 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 meetings that each person's voice is is listened to. They might not be be um agreed upon, but that they but the the decision of what is acceptable and what isn't acceptable is is a consensus again, and and so that every voice is heard and that every voice is matters. And so through that we show, yes, yes, people on both sides have valid And so through that we show, yes, yes, people on both sides have valid opinions. And have have. Have the children, the students at the heart of the issue, what is best for students? And that. Ideology on either side and indoctrination on either side is not, is not present. And we, this is also a point of trust that we're we're saying. We're willing to step out in faith that this can work out. That that is our objective, that there is going to be a safe place for this type of work to get done.
So Director Powers, if this work gets done and it goes against policy of the school board, then what?
Well, if it goes, I mean, they they would have to be able to bring back a revision of the policy. If that is something that the committee works through. Then we don't have, we as a board don't have to accept it. But we we can listen to the to and appreciate the work that they went through to do this. And that that there's hope that there there can come a consensus that. Both sides can agree that this, that this need is there. What, how do we address this need that every student feels comfortable? And that every student feels involved and welcomed. And and not like what what. Mister Willow or Miss Willow said, you know, that she doesn't feel. Connected to the school. And so that we we make it so that that. That that we show by example that we can make this work. That we are willing to step out of our. Our. Sides and offer this a chance for our our educators who have the this know the students. And and. The expertise on this. To 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 allow them to to set their. When you give us an educator something to do, their brains start going and they really. They they can become release the creative juices, actually, instead of hindering them.
Who picks the the committee then, who's the?
Well, I I think that it should be volunteer. And that the chairman, either the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, or the designation. Of of whoever is, but that that. The the committee is since selected and then all the committee members say, I can work with these people. Or I'm having a hard time with this person, you know, and and that they have some also say in. In the dynamics of the committee.
Okay. Any other questions here, you guys for Director Pyros?
I who who appoints the initial members then under your suggestion?
The superintendent or the the designated chairman. Superintendent, the assistant superintendent, or the director of teaching and learning. Someone that 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 knows how to direct meetings and and work through this process.
And how would they go about selecting a group that was balanced? Are you gonna make her and fill out a form as to what? Symbols they consider to be ideological? Where what? I I appreciate the sentiment, it just the actual mechanics of implementing something like that seem difficult.
Well, that's something where I trust the the superintendent, their assistant superintendent. Or the the director of teaching and learning, I I I trust their ability to. To find their their goal would be to find a balanced, workable committee. So they know their, they know their staff, they would have help with the administrators. And that that it's it's. That we show them the trust that we have in our our leaders. To do to do this fairly, and if and if there's any problems, then we would hear about it. And and deal deal with. With with problems then, but I I I I feel we need to start showing trust. To our leaders and to our educators that we feel that they could, they could come up with with. Valid solutions to some of these issues.
Would we have a say in who was selected?
I don't think, I don't, I don't think so, I I.
Because I really don't trust a lot of the. Administrator people that would pick it, I mean, I would like to have. A saying who would is to make sure it's balanced.
Well, that could be a stipulation if if the board members. I. I'm sorry, you don't.
Well, maybe the volunteers that would want to participate in this could. Come and speak at the board and give us a little bit of insight, I guess. Like like their opinion, so.
So I think Renee, if you would, if you are leaning that way, that would be more of an ad hoc. Committee of the board, and you could do it as like the Equity Committee that. I'm not sure if that's meeting yet or not, but. As this is written as a a committee, a superintendent or designate committee. I don't think the board would play that role in it, however, you know, if you wanted to have another board committee that would play a role in that, that is, that is an option.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out. Again, of how it have it balanced. Because it is, I. I like that idea, I just I'm afraid it won't be fair and balanced because of. Just things that have been taken place.
Well, like I, like I said, the the committee, once the committee is, the initial committee is is formed. Then they also would have a say saying, I don't feel safe here, I don't feel, you know.
That. That doesn't seem like. The problem is, is that everyone. When they don't like the other person's opinions, now we have this idea that. Of emotional trauma and violence, so your ideas are making me feel unsafe. So to me, that what you're building is a mechanism there for it to throw out any balance that we're able to create through the appointment process. That's not, that that makes it less workable in my mind. And I think if you want us to to go along with this, we need to have it stipulated how these people are being. Appointed, and it certainly shouldn't be the case that. People start throwing around that they're uncomfortable and kicking members off the committee, that just doesn't work.
Brian, didn't you just say that that you were afraid that people wouldn't feel safe coming up to volunteer for the committee because of. Fear of oppression or retribution for what they're going to say, I mean, it. I'm just confused because it goes both ways, right? How do you create a safe environment for the entire group?
Well, I think that's, you know, I, those are all good comments, I think Director Powers, what I'm thinking is, you know, for me. The concept is there, I just think it needs to. Can you go back and I know you got a lot of passion for this. And I think there's some, you know, like you said, the trust factor in our district is is low. Even with all of us looking at each other, the trust factor is low. How, since this is your kind of, you know, you've got the big passion on this. Can you come back to the next meeting and just. Come up with a little bit more of a fine tuned plan on this, I like the concept, I just want to know. How the mechanics are really going to work, so this could be an effective committee, you know, moving forward, so that that's my thoughts on it.
Rebecca, oh, man.
Sure.
Rebecca, thank you for the effort that you've already put into creating this. And keep and having brought it to before the board, before all of the board members and not excluding any board members. While I support your efforts and would vote to support this. I don't think that this is going to happen. Unfortunately, given the. Poor working relationship we have on this board. But again, want to acknowledge your hard work on this. And also the fact that you included all board members in creating and bringing this forward instead of blindsiding board members.
Well, your opinion. If you would like to, Rebecca, expand on that thing, like I said, I I think the the concept is interesting. So I am listening. And I think that you. Just try to fine tune it so we can get some past some of the questions that were brought up tonight. And let's, let's revisit next meeting, I'll make sure with Jennifer gets on the agenda and let's talk about it, but. Try to get past some of those hurdles that we were brought up tonight.
So do we need to ta- table the 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 motion?
Yeah.
There was, there was no motion.
I know, that's what I would recommend.
I know, we, well, you don't need to table because no motion has been made, so we can just move on and you can bring back. The refined idea when you have it ready.
Yeah, because I'd like to discuss it further as well, Rebecca. I, so.
And thank you, Rebecca, for your tireless efforts in in this area of of bringing, attempting to bring some community and consensus, I really appreciate your work on this.
And I'm willing to work on this more if there is a consensus. That that this possibility of being being something that would be adopted. If I work through this, do what, what does Trevor think?
Yeah, Rebecca, I I like the idea intrigued, it's just that the devil's in the details, right? So I, you know, I could get on board with this as long as we address some of these issues. You know, feel feel free to reach out out to me and, you know, we can discuss it further, I'd be happy to help you with it, I like the concept.
I'll do my best.
Okay, thanks, Rebecca. Okay. We are under new business, our first one is a statement of board decision, policy G B G complaint. On September thirtieth, two thousand twenty one, policy G B G complaint zero nine, three, zero, two, one, reported a poster displayed in a classroom. Window.
We didn't, go ahead, Dave, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Now I'm reading through this thing here too.
A point of war, Mister Chair, is this referring to something we're supposed to discuss in the executive committee?
Yeah, I'm backing that one up there, I thought that's where we were supposed to be on this thing.
So I moved to table.
There's no staff members mentioned, that's why it's not a personnel action, that's why there there are no staff members mentioned in this one. That's, this is just an an outdoor display, that's why it's not an executive session, it's not a personnel action.
We can talk about?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll read again, on September thirty, two thousand twenty one, policy G B G complaint zero nine, three, zero, two, one, reported a poster displayed in a classroom window at the Dundee Elementary School to be in violation of policy G B G. Staff participation in political activities and was submitted to the district through the complaint process outlined in policy K L slash J F H. Public and student complaint procedure and associated administrative regulations. Because the complaint was dissatisfied, the complainant was dissatisfied with the findings and conclusions. Provided in steps one through three of the complaint process, the complainant chose to appeal the decision to the board. On November ninth, two thousand twenty one, the board will. That's where I got a little confused too.
We we will move to uphold the decision or.
Yeah.
Over overturn the decision.
The board will hold a hearing regarding the complaint as it relates to a violation of a newly passed policy G B G staff participation in political activities and deliver a statement. Of their decision to either uphold or overturn administrative decision, appeal to the board on policy G B G complaint zero nine, three, zero, two, one. Yes.
I move that the Newburg School Board of Directors uphold the decision made by the. Made by the administrator of the school and the superintendent.
I'll second.
Are we allowed to ask what that, we got a motion of second for discussion, are we allowed to ask what that decision was?
Yeah.
You should know what the decision was before.
It's, yeah, it's all in the board packet, all the email correspondence and decision making is is part of the board packet.
Oh, I got you.
For the sake of public meeting, Joe, could you tell us what the decision was?
The decision was that the poster as described was not political.
And somebody tell me what the poster was.
Says.
What's that?
It says. The poster says.
There's a picture of it, Dave, in your board packet, you go to page forty.
Poster has a rainbow background, it has a white semi translucent heart, and it has the phrase be known, which I believe is the George Fox University's tagline as well.
How's that fitting with our policy G B G then?
Now, so we have to decide.
And we got a thought on that, is it? What we were talking about with this ban or was it not? Because it's the first time on through the complaint process, it's coming all the way to the board.
It, to me, it doesn't seem controversial or political or quasi political, it has nothing to do. With with. B L M or pride or it just says be known and and. If it's George Fox's tagline, I don't think we can go against that.
Well, I guess I would, not trying to be mean to George Fox, but they're George Fox and we're Newburg School District, so, I mean.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it out there, so I guess I would like to see it, I'd like to overturn until I could go look at it.
Dave, there's a picture of it in the board packet, it's in the. I I think that if a private Christian university can say that be known is not a controversial or political statement, I feel like as a public school system, we could do the same.
Are they, I mean, let's, let's be honest, this question is, is this a pride flag with an image transposed over it? And. It's. This is like the greatest of gray areas for me, because is any rainbow pattern automatically a pride flag? I don't, I don't think it is, my daughter wears, you know, rainbow pajamas all the time. So this is, this is a tough one, I'm not gonna lie. I honestly, you know, it's late and we still have a lot to get through. I'd like some time to think about this one, honestly, so I'd move to table.
I would second that.
I will not support that tabling because we've had to, we've had time to look at this, we've. Had this complaint known to us, the complainant emailed the board, we have seen it in, you know. In the windows of Dundee Elementary School, Trevor, I assume you have driven by the school time and again, it's in your zone. I don't know what going and seeing the actual physical sign will change when we have a picture of it in our packet. And I think you're right. And I think you're right, Brian. This is the exact issue with this policy of is a rainbow a political symbol? Just yes or no?
Or controversial.
Or controversial or quasi political. And if it is, then that's what you think. If it isn't, then that's what you think. And I don't think that waiting another two weeks will do anything uh, to change any of that.
Well, since this is our first time that we've had something come, a complaint all the way to the board. I would like to table so we can uh, go through this because this is gonna set the, the stage for the next however long. How many more complaints are we gonna have?
Point of information, Chair, has the board looked at the policy to see what the timeframe is for ruling on an appeal to the board?
No, I think it's ten days, isn't it?
It is.
You also have a motion and a second on the floor, so you'll have to vote on that before we can go to the next one.
I have a, I have a question. How many, has any of the board members discussed this issue with Mister, with, with the complainant?
No.
Trevor, Renee, Ryan, Brandy.
Unless you have some information that would indicate that, that's a really weird thing to ask. But no Rebecca, Rebecca, I haven't talked to complainant.
I, I don't think it's a, an odd question to ask. I think it's a, trying to better understand the full situation.
Just trying to make. Just a reminder, if we shake our heads or nod, Rebecca can't see that, so we should say it.
Sorry, I have not talked to this person about this flag.
Okay. Neither have I.
Enes?
No, I haven't Rebecca.
Trevor?
No, I was just wondering why we didn't discuss this on executive session, but um, you know, I, I, I guess I have some questions, you know, and I'll, I'll just throw these out, um. You know, there's many types of different ducks in the world and uh, you know, they've got different coloring, different shapes, but in the end, they're all ducks, so. You know, if we, if we take a pride flag or BLM flag or mega flag and we put a heart on it, um, does it change the essence of what it is? If this didn't have a rainbow on it, if it was just, what, what, what's the saying on it?
Be known.
Be known. If it was just a heart and said be known in it, would it, you know, would we both be voting different on this? So I'll just throw that out there. Um, you know, I just, I just wonder if, you know, individuals are just, uh, you know, trying to find ways around, um, what's already known just by throwing different symbols or um, wording on it. Um, to, to me, it doesn't matter if, you know, this is a, a George Fox saying or not. Um, we, we've got to do right by what, what our district needs, so I'll just throw that out there.
That's why it would be nice to have, have, had this situation discussed and decided upon before we pass the policy. Or we had a committee to, to work through these issues beforehand.
Well, the idea that you could form a committee that would account for every possible symbol that we would come across, um, isn't really realistic. To me, so here's, here's the thing. I think that this is a workaround to get around the, the, the policy, and I don't like that. At the same time, I'm afraid that by interpreting the policy too rigidly or too broadly is the correct word, we would be endangering the policy itself, uh, in court. So I would really like to table this so that we can, um, you know, where I would like to talk about this with our lawyer in the executive session.
I don't, what, what legal advice do you think he will give us? I, I guess you don't know that. You're not an attorney. My, my question is around what Trevor and, and you said Brian, as far as, um, you know, okay, so it's a rainbow. I, I'm sorry, excuse me. So if it's a rainbow this time, um, then, and you say, okay, rainbows are no good. And next time maybe it's baby pink and baby blue. Well, maybe that's not okay because that's a symbol of trans flags. I mean, it, the, the issue of this is that it will continue to be this process in which we are not able to define anything because they're literally colors. Um, and sure, I'd love to hear what Mr. Smith has to say about this.
Tyler, should we save this for executive session? Are you comfortable speaking to this?
Well, I was gonna, I can't answer questions. Those could and should probably go on executive session. I was simply gonna point out that step four of the complaint process does not have that ten day window. There's a twenty day window in step four. I was just looking it up. Uh, you have to notify the complainant within twenty days of the board's decision. But step four does not have the five or ten day period attached to it.
Thank you, Tyler. So I think we should table this. There's, that's the motion. I think we should table it so we can discuss this with the attorney.
Uh, you already have a motion. You do have a motion on the floor though, and second, and so you have to vote on that one first before the next one.
Uh, no, the move to, the motion to table supersedes that motion. I know, by Robert's rules, Joe.
Then we do that one first. Director Shannon, you make that motion and I seconded it, so that's our first one.
So we need to vote on that, the motion to table.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling this one, raise your hand. Okay, Director Dehart, Powell, Shannon Brown, those not in favor, raise your hand. Director Pyros, Penner, Penya, motion to table, four, three. Okay. Do that one. Next one up. OSBA elections. Uh, Rebecca, can you uh, give us another, uh, this is for your uh, thing for the OSBA correctly?
Right, so you first, um, nominated me for this position and now it's, the district needs to vote on me. So I'm, um, I'm on the ballot for Yamhill County and Pope County as the representative to serve on the Legislative Policy Committee for OSBA for the next two years. I've served on it for two years already. So I'm just asking i- i- if our, our district will support my nomination.
Okay, I think everybody's got their information on us correctly. Right?
Yep, I, I will move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve voting in favor Rebecca Pyros to continue to serve another two-year term on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of nominating Rebecca to continue to serve another two-year term on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, please raise your hand. Uh, vote seven, zero. Rebecca, thank you.
Thank you.
Look on all that. You made that one the easiest one of the night. Uh, Budget Committee Discussion, Nikki Fowler. I think Nikki kind of covered this earlier, but I'll let her go again. Nikki, go ahead.
Okay, I think this is in your board packet. It's pretty straightforward. As you read through it, we have several folks that their term expires on December twenty-one. Um, so if you go through there and you see your name next to your appointed members, um, I need you to follow up with those members and see if they want to continue on. If they do not, I need you to try to recruit somebody in there as a replacement. Um, are there any questions?
Yeah, can you go slower on that one? It's a little bit late. Can you say that one more time? I know, it's only been like twelve hours.
Right, so if you read that page, the bright yellow folks, if your name is in the bright yellow, that means you have work to do. And so your appointed members, you need to check in with them and see if they want to continue on, on the budget committee. If they do not, then you need to try to seek a new person. Um, so that's, that's pretty much it. If you need help with that or need, have any other questions, you can uh, reach out to me. You know where to find me.
Okay, Nikki, Nikki, this is Trevor. Do you have the contact information that you can send us on these individuals or individual?
Yeah, yeah, we can send that out to you.
Awesome, thanks.
Not a problem.
Okay, is that it Nikki?
Yep, that's it on it. Just notification. We need to try to get these folks on board. Um, as our, one of my next items is talking about the budget calendar and so, um, yeah, you'll need to start looking for people if your, if your person does not want to continue.
And when do you need that by? When do you need to have?
Well, our first meetings are in February. So you have a little time to bring them on.
Okay, any questions for Nikki, you guys? All right, Nikki, you're not off the hook yet. You got Budget Process Calendar, I guess, or did you just kind of alluded to that a little bit? Do you want to talk about that some more?
Um, I did allude to it a little bit. You can review this. Um, if you have any questions or concerns, let us know and we can adjust it a little bit. Um, in a nutshell, the first couple of meetings are training. Um, so if, if you're new to the process, we will go through some kind of nuts and bolts of, um, the budget and how it works. Where the revenues come from and just kind of the process as a whole. Um, and then the third meeting is uh, more of a detailed meeting for the current budget. Um, and then we'll get into our, uh, legally required budget committee meetings after that. Um, and just, you know, follow it through. We'll have, um, our first budget committee hearing after that. And then another detailed kind of an informal meeting. And then by the second budget committee meeting, we need to have the budget committee passing it. Um, because we'll start to run out of time, so you have to watch the calendar. Um, and if it doesn't look, if there's a lot of questions and there's a lot of, uh, if the legislature is still moving around and the numbers aren't real clear, we can always throw in an extra meeting if need be. Um, but the budget has to be adopted and ready to go by mid-June, so we meet all of our requirements, so. Um, just go ahead and review that calendar. Be sure it fits into your calendar. Be sure you put those dates on your calendar would probably be the more accurate um, description there. Um, and then it'll be back for approval.
Got it. Nikki, once again, thank you very much. Okay.
Dave, can we take a quick break?
You bet. Take five minutes. It's ten oh four. We'll go ten oh nine when we come back.
I want to be respectful of people's time. Are we ready to go? What's the plan?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for everybody to pop back up on here. We're close. Okay, we've got all board members. Brandy, I don't see Brandy yet. There's Brandy. Thanks, Brandy. Okay.
I actually saw Rebecca on the attendee side, but I don't know if she needs to be promoted back or if she's having trouble coming back. I don't know.
Yeah, let's make sure she can. Been a piece of cake day for you, but any ideas on Rebecca?
I don't know. Zoom's doing some crazy stuff right now with microphones and people, so, um.
All right. I just tried to promote her. So Rebecca, if you can have Jean help you click the okay on the screen, you'll be promoted back to the panelist.
That's what I'm gonna do too.
All right, Rebecca, trying again. It was declined, so I'm trying it again. There we go.
Yes, she is.
There we go.
Okay, I'm on.
Got you, Rebecca.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, you're fine. Uh, okay, we're moving on to New Business Line E on that one.
How long are we going to continue, may I ask?
Probably tomorrow. I'm thinking tomorrow. We'll probably get her done. I don't know, Rebecca. I can't tell you. Uh, a little bit longer. Supplemental Attorney Services Discussion. Uh, presenter is Vice Chair Brian Shannon. I'll read this one background. October 26, 2021, the Board held a work session discussion requested by Director Rebecca Pyros regarding seizing the supplemental attorney services provided to the Board by Tyler Smith and Tyler Smith and Associates. The Board agreed to place the item onto the agenda for the November 9, 2021 regular meeting for deliberation and to consider possible action. Vice Chair Brian Shannon requested that the Board consider two possible options regarding the supplemental attorney services, one to confirm the hiring of Tyler Smith, and one to see supplemental attorney services with Tyler Smith. The Board will discuss options and take possible action regarding the supplemental attorney services provided by Tyler Smith at tonight's meeting.
I would make a motion that the Newburg School of Direct, Board of Directors cease, um, employment of Tyler Smith as per recommended.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I, um, while I support not having Mr. Smith associated with our school district, I, um, will not be voting on this because of all of the impending legal, um, cases that are currently, uh, part of our board situation right now. And, um, you know, there's questions around if he was even legally retained. And so I would hate to, I would hate for there to be an attempt to try to legally retain him tonight or to, to dismiss him, uh, and have that have legal ramifications. So, um, because of that, I, uh, will either abstain or I will not vote to, um, make any sort of movement on this this evening.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the table, um, in a second. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. We have two. We have Director Pyros, Director Penya. Those not in favor, please raise your hand. Uh, Directors Brown, Powell, uh, Dehart, and Shannon.
Okay, if he's going to be-
Rebecca, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, can you please call for abstentions, Dave?
Yeah. Those who, uh, are not voting or abstain, please raise your hand.
I move that the Newburg School District Board of Directors reaffirm the hiring of Tyler Smith as Board's supplemental attorney.
I would second that motion.
Okay, I would like to know if he's going to be retained, that all of us get all the emails that are communicated between Tyler Smith and the Board, so that, that, um, we are part of the, the, the situation. Because, um, I've asked for, to be notified or to be sent emails that of Board communication to Tyler and Tyler to the Board. And I was told to, to ask, um, Chair Brown, I, I put in a request three times for that to happen, and finally had to turn to the, um, the school district to ask for a public's record request. And through that discovery, found out that, that Director Powell actually phoned direct, um, Tyler Smith with questions and Tyler Smith directed or, or sent, uh, email to, um, Chair Brown asking for permission to discuss with, with Director Powell, and she was given permission to do that. And so I, I want the same, um, permission to, to have access of all information that's going on between the Board members and Tyler Smith.
And I would say, you know, on that too, we need to get, um, I talked to, uh, Lisa from MSD and talked to Tyler Smith about this. We definitely need to be, uh, spoken to as a board by them, uh, in executive session, to inform us exactly what attorney-client privileges really are. So we don't make any mistakes on that. So.
But can we ensure that the whole Board gets notified of, of, um, that we're aware of what's going on?
I think what Rebecca is referring to, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, is that we have intentionally been left out of communication, which puts it at a disadvantage when participating in decision-making. So the bare minimum is to let us know what is going on, so we at least are not blindsided.
Okay.
I'll say, um, I've got a few thoughts on this. Um, this attorney was retained in violation of public meeting law and without Board consent. No other attorneys were considered, and there was no conversation among the Board on whether we even needed supplemental counsel. Um, I agree with Rebecca. The only information I have of communications, um, with Mr. Smith between the four Board members is from public records requests. And it's clear that Mr. Smith started working on this project on August 20th. And again, on August 23rd, there was billable work, yet he wasn't even illegally retained until the 24th. Uh, the bill for August alone was over $3,000. Um, I, I have the same concerns as Director, um, Penya, as far as we have, this is clearly not a Board, um, attorney. This is a, a personal attorney for four Board members. Um, and now we have no way of communicating. There's no actual representation for him. Um, and, and it will be interesting to see what the complaint process conversation is later on in this agenda, because it's clear that complaints, um, as far as I know, so far, the little that I do know, um, complaints against Board members are going to Mr. Smith, who's not doing anything about them, and we have no access or anything to them. Um, it's incredibly problematic, and I don't think it will end well. Um, and because of that, I will not be supporting this motion.
Well, that would be your opinion. So I would say that, uh, again, Rebecca, back to your question, is we definitely, as a board, need to be, uh, between Lisa and, uh, if Tyler Smith's our attorney to be, uh, talked to about attorney-client privileges, so we don't violate any of those issues. So hopefully nobody's violated those issues. That would be terrible.
But it would be also, if we're not included in the, the, we understand about, um, lawyer, um, confidentiality, and, and, um, we just want to be included and, and part of the, the Board, if he's, if he's the Board represent, if he's a Board lawyer, we want to be included in that Board.
Well, he's the lawyer for the Board as the whole, not for the individual members of the Board. And I've never gone to Tyler with a legal question.
But you did have the oppo, you did have a chance to discuss with him on the, on, prior to, to the, um, the decision to hire him. And, um, Director Powell had a question. I don't know what it was about, but she had a question, and she was given permission to discuss things with him. Why wasn't I given permission for him to forward emails to me?
Well, did you ask the Chair for permission?
I did three times and got no response from the Chair. And that's why I went to public records.
Well, the motion we have on the table now. The Director Shannon made a motion, and I seconded it. Uh, so I'd say those in favor of retaining, uh, Tyler Smith as a supplemental attorney. Uh, if you're in favor of that, please raise your hand. Uh, Director Powell, Shannon, Dehart, and Brown. For those not in favor, please raise your hand. Rebecca Pyros, Penya, and Penner. Motion passes for three to retain Tyler Smith Associates as supplemental attorney.
Dave, what time is it?
It is 10:23. You need a break?
No, I, I would like to call for, for, um, for the end of the meeting. I feel it's getting, um, late and that it's, um, many people, uh, who are watching this, who deserve to be, um, part of this meeting, have, have work or have, um, have gone to bed. I think it's, it, the, the next topics are too important to discuss at the end of the, a long meeting. And I would wish to, to, um, adjourn the meeting.
Well, we're gonna do this next one. We're gonna keep going. We've gone later than this before, so it's only 10:24. So we are going to bring up right now what we talked about in executive session and the, and the fourth session there, which would be, uh, line F that we added earlier, a vote on 192.660.
Dave, I'm sorry, aren't there two, aren't there two issues before that about, uh, public and Board comment procedures and also, uh, complaint processes against Board members?
No.
No, the, the, we're in new business still, not the discussion.
Okay, so those will, okay, thank you.
So, back to this one, uh, vote on 192.660 parentheses two parentheses B. We discussed this already in executive session. So I make the motion.
Move to table.
Excuse me?
Move to table.
What, what are we tabling?
Oh, you let me pull up the executive session agenda. There's so many versions of it.
So we, while you're doing that, we left executive session with an understanding of how this would go without decisions being made. And now I feel like you're trying to change that, Brian. That's why I'm confused.
No, this is, this is the complaint item.
We were going to recess that.
Yes, and because we have a decision on that item and we're in recess in executive session, I'm moving to table. So that's the complaint item that we were dealing with.
So you're going, Nikki.
So we're tabling the complaint, but not the decision. The decision is still gonna happen, correct?
There are two items. I think you're referring to the other item.
Right, I am. I just want to-
We're dealing with, we're dealing with the complaints that were discussed in executive session, the disposition on those, which we, I am moving to table, and the Chair should ask for a second.
Is there a second? Is there a second, Trevor? Any more discussion?
I would like to ask, um, I, I think that goes against what legal counsel suggested to do.
No, it's not. It's not what they said.
Tyler? Are we doing it right?
Yes, the, the motion to table was one of the options that was presented for, um, potential Board decision.
On the complaints, correct?
On the, on the complaints themselves.
This is a difficult item because, uh, so much of it was done and conducted in executive session, that it, it's probably gonna be a bit clunky for everyone following along at home, because there's so many things we can't actually say about it. Because of executive session privilege. That's very frustrating.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Those in favor of tabling that one, please raise your hand. Vote for Brown, Shannon, Dehart, and Powell. Those not in favor, raise your hand. Director Pyros. And District Director Pyros, those abstaining? Directors Penya and and there we go. Okay.
Penner, Penner, and Penya.
All right, next one up.
I, I really, I move that we table this and adjourn the meeting. I feel it's, it's too important to push this through.
No, we're gonna go move forward.
Well, I mean, I need a motion.
You need a, you need a, if there's a second, you can, you have to vote. There's no more, there's no discussion about a motion to table, but you have to have a vote if there's a second.
All right, we have the motion. We have the second. Vote on 192.
Who's, who's second is it?
Yeah.
Trevor did.
No.
No.
I will, I will second it because I agree with Director, uh, Pyros, that there has been insufficient public comments, input, notification, and it is 10:30 at night on a school night.
Is that your motion for the?
That is my second and my reasoning why I've seconded it.
To stop the meeting. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, those in favor, stop in the meeting, then raise your hand. Directors Penya, Pyros, and Penner, three. Those not in favor, stop in the meeting, raise your hand. Directors Brown, Shannon, Dehart, and Powell. Motion fails three, four. Okay. Number F. Voting on 192.660 parentheses two parentheses B, what we talked about in-
No, 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 no. Different item, Dave.
It's just this superintendent situation.
I thought that was our number right there.
No, we're, we're not discussing anything carried over from the executive session.
Okay.
I, I have a quick request, uh, or question, I guess, for Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, since this is a public meeting and we are publicly elected officials voting on, uh, something of high importance, there has to be some way for the public to understand what this vote is. Can you please expand on that a little bit further for us?
Uh, I think there will be a way for the public to understand what the voting is, uh, depending on what the motion is made, what motions are made, and, uh, what's stated in those motions should, should cover the context of the, um, motion.
That's your question?
Yep, thank you.
All right, I make the motion then that we, uh, see if I get the language down here correctly. Make the motion that we, uh, terminate the contract of Superintendent Morlock. And with no cause.
Chair.
Yes.
Chair Brown, there's some recommended motions, um, in the packet. You should probably use language that's been, um, reviewed by counsel.
And to just clarify in this, the packet that you're referring to is a packet that the Board has not seen and is also not a part of the actual public packet. Is that correct?
Uh, there's a packet provided in executive session. You're correct.
But that most, that most of us did not get it until the time of the executive meeting.
I think it's that same packet, yep.
But we still have not reviewed it, just so everybody's clear.
Shannon, do you have a copy of that?
I've certainly not had time to review this.
I, I got it when everyone else in the group did, uh, during the session. Because, because of a mix-up in- during the session, because, because of a mix-up in, uh, forwarding it on to us, apparently. Not because anyone conspired to keep it from us. I also didn't get it until the same time as all the other directors.
Do you have that language to read there, Director Shannon? I can still make-
But, but that gives me pause to think, we need to, to have a opportunity to read the information that was sent to us and not move too quickly to judgment.
I mean, we tabled a motion on if we're gonna figure out if, if a rainbow sign is political or not. And because people didn't have enough time to review the packet that they had for four or five days and the packet that we just received a couple hours ago while we were in a meeting, uh, is certainly not sufficient time for me to review it and understand it.
Tyler, where, where in the pack is the language you're suggesting you use?
Um, there is a, uh, it's in the recommended course, possible courses of action. There's about five potential motions in there. It's on page 11, if you're looking at the pages, under that complaint process.
Someone's gonna have to read those because Rebecca can't access that. And if we wanna provide access, you know, she should be able to know what we're gonna be voting on.
I should have been given, given this information prior to the meeting.
Um, so page 11 of the PDF document is is chapter three, four, two, teachers and other school personnel? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about the motion to give written notice.
Could you just read, could you just give him the language, Tyler?
Yeah, Chair Brown, I believe what you're, what one you're talking about was the motion to give 10 days' notice of termination for no cause. Resuited to paragraph 10D of the employment contract.
Okay.
Is that the one that you were trying to make?
Yes. The motion is a 10-day termination written under 10-d of an employment contract. That is my motion. Is there a second? Okay.
So Chair Brown, what, what is it, what, what is the motion? I'm looking at it.
It's a 10-day-
No cause termination of contract notwithstanding, so section one of this agreement?
Yes.
District may discharge superintendent and superintendent and terminate this agreement without any showing of cause upon 10 days' written notice. And the tendering of the district's certification of willingness to continue superintendent's salary and fringe benefits up to 12 months or pay the balance of superintendent's salary and fringe benefits, whichever is less, with understanding superintendent shall work for those additional months at the discretion of the board. Such notice shall terminate this agreement without recourse.
That was reading from the contract.
That was page five.
I, I think this process is definitely illuminating the fact that, that this is not above board. We've not had time to review this. We don't even know what's happening. The people making the motions don't even know the wording and it is illustrating the need for much more time on this.
And there was no second, so the motion dies.
I was clarifying what the motion was.
But, but, but Chair, Chair Brown.
You, you didn't though, you just read the contract. You didn't read the motion.
Okay, can you read the motion again, Chair Brown?
I make the motion that we terminate the contract with 10-day notice of termination in a written form, which is per, part of the contract, contract for Dr. Morlock. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So everybody at home following along is clear, this will fire the superintendent. He will have 10 days to leave. We will pay him for 12 months. And at some point, we'll need to find an interim superintendent in which we will also need to be paying. So we will be paying for two superintendents and the financial and legal liabilities for the district are endless.
Nikki, if I may, could we, at some point between now and whenever the next time we meet or get a, an estimate of what our total expense will tally up to?
Yes, I can definitely get that. Would you like that just in dollar amounts or by staff or?
Ooh, good question. I think dollar amounts, um, for sure. And then if I have more questions, I'll forward them to you via, via email.
I oppose this motion. I feel that, that the board has not tried hard enough to work with Joe. And his integrity has brought the district from almost crippling financial ruin to, to, um, a bond, a hundred and forty-one million dollar bond issue that he has been guiding through us. And, and we will lose his expertise. He, we will lose his community, um, involvement with the Rotary and with various local groups, what work he has been doing on behalf of Newburgh School District. I feel we will lose staff who has, has grown and been brought here because of Joe's integrity. And, and what, what he's being, um, because he didn't rush to do something that he felt was illegal. He was protecting the school district from our rashness. And that is what a, what a CEO does. He sees the big, big picture. And I don't feel that, that the other school board members have, can see the big, big picture. And I've worked with Joe and I've worked with others, other superintendents. And I have found Joe to be open and honest and trustworthy and, and willing to, to work with people. And I feel that this is not financially, um, transparent in what you have, uh, will commit this, the district to. And I've gone through as superintendent, um, search processes. And, and if we can't even get together with a policy committee, how are we going to get together with all of our schedules to do a, a superintendent's search involving the community? I, I, I'm baffled why you feel this is, is needed to be done and why you feel it needed to be done tonight. I feel you've just jammed this through and insisted upon it. And that does not go, we do not work together that way when we feel jammed up and just, and just pushed along the way. You, you talk about, um, what was the term you used, um, Dave, about, oh, I, I forgot. You said something in your board comments about, um, how, how to look at one another and, um, oh, and I just feel that this has been on your agenda since day one, that the two new board members were, were voted on and that you're gonna, we're gonna lose so much from, from this action. I'm, I'm just very, 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 um, saddened of your unwillingness to work together and to work with what we have and strive and, and be an example of bridge building.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just wanna remind everybody to make sure that there's no, um, personal attacks or anything like that discussed in public session.
Who, who said that?
Tyler Smith.
Oh.
I wanna remind you of the, of the legal obligation.
I heard, yeah, we heard. Yeah, it's problematic for so many reasons. I have cried multiple times today. We will be losing a leader and I'm certain this will be a four-three vote. We will be losing a leader who has pulled us out of financial ruin, who has rebuilt community, who has rebuilt relationships in the matter of three months. Four people have completely destroyed that. And I, I am certain that this will have rippling effects for months and years to come. And I doubt that all four of you will even be here when the rebuilding really gets to beginning and when it really starts to happen. This is going to set our district back decade. And not only that, but like I said in my opening statements, it is our children who will suffer. And it feels that that is the point. I fully expect that this will just be added to the mountain of litigation that, that these four board members have currently got us into. I am concerned that we will lose insurance coverage. I'm concerned that we will have absolute inability to provide even basic services to our children because of this decision. And that has been widely discussed in executive session and everybody voting tonight knows exactly what they're voting for.
That is your opinion?
Dave, literally, every time I say something, you say it's my opinion. Some of it is opinion, but some of it is fact and it will all come out. And this has been the shadiest, shadiest process ever. And unfortunately, like I said, it will be our children who have to pay for this because they will be losing resources out of their classrooms. And those are my kids. Those are my kids' classrooms that you are taking money from. And that is not my opinion. That is a financial and actual reality fact.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Directors Brown, Dehart, Powell and Shannon. Those not in favor, raise your hand. Directors Penya, Pyros and Penner. Motion passed four, three.
I, I protest that none, none of you had anything to say why you wanted to do this. That the public is, is, is-
It's, it's done. We've already discussed this.
We know exactly why Rebecca, because they're cowards and they know they're gonna get sued. We know exactly why. We don't need to discuss-
Gonna move on now?
During the meeting, please do, Dave. Please adjourn this.
Are we gonna move on or you wanna stop now?
I, I move that we just adjourn the meeting at this point. I don't think anything constructive will happen with this board again.
I'll second.
All right, if everybody's in agreement to that, uh, if everybody'd like to end the meeting right now, please raise your hand.
Can I make a comment to Dr. Morlock?
Sure.
Dr. Morlock, we know you and we trust you and this pains us terribly. And, and know that, that your integrity has, has, has spurred us to be, be faithful servers of, to our children. And, and we wish you well. We're so sorry. And, and we just, and, and very disappointed in this decision.
Thanks Rebecca. Just remember that from the, the darkest dark comes the brightest light. So everything will work out eventually, okay? Thanks again.
You're a bigger man than I am.
All right, meeting is adjourned.